We're back in session for the city council's special meeting. I'm pleased to introduce our next candidate, the three o'clock appointment. Gary McChin is with us. On behalf of the city council, Gary, welcome. Thank you for participating in this process. It's an important process for the city of Troy. Thank you. Just a couple of points before we start. Each council member is going to ask a question. We'll go around the table once and then there'll be a second question by each council member. I'll ask the last question and then give you an opportunity to ask questions or give a closing statement at that time.
Okay.
And just to let you know, Gary, we've asked the same question of every candidate, so we're going to ask you the same questions that we asked the other candidates, so everything's fair.
Very good. Thank you.
Having said that, please tell us about yourself and then explain your reasons for wanting to be the next Troy city manager.
Well, let's see, where do I start? So I am a product of Farmington Hills, unfortunately, not Troy. I was born and raised in Farmington Hills, a product of southeastern Michigan. I'm one of three siblings, one of three children, I should say. Father worked for Chrysler Corporation and my mom taught violin. Worked hard, blue collar family, and they managed to put four kids through school. So that work ethic was instilled in me from the very beginning. Played a lot of football through middle school and high school, a lot of team sports, and was fortunate, I don't know how, but somehow managed to get into Michigan State. And when I went there, I was impacted in high school by my high school chemistry teacher. And so I decided I was going to go off and be some kind of an engineer, probably a chemical engineer, nuclear engineer, something like that. Got there and very quickly found that maybe I set the bar a little too high for myself. So did a lot of looking around. I knew I wanted to do something in a technical capacity, but I also loved something else very much, and that's history. And so I kind of married the two together and I thought, what can I do from a technical perspective that kind of blends history and probably political science a little bit? And I found it was civil engineering. That's really, that was a great fit. It enabled me to have the technical expertise and learn the technical expertise of infrastructure design and maintenance and to somehow, perhaps maybe in the future, apply it in a public setting. I knew certainly that I was going to highly, likely start in the private sector, which is where I did start. I was fortunate enough to get a job with a company named Camp Dresser McKee, which is a large international civil and environmental consulting firm. Worked in Detroit, did an awful lot of stormwater management, sanitary sewer overflow design, watershed-type work. In fact, I don't know if anybody around the table here ever heard about the Rouge Program Office or the Alliance of Rouge Communities. Troy was a part of that, still is. And I was a part of that project, I guess I'm getting old now, from the very beginning, and it's somewhat dissolved right now. So it started in 94 in Detroit. That kind of ran its course, and every job that I took from there on kind of went to a smaller and smaller organization. I wanted to get closer and closer to the clients. I didn't want to get lost in a large consulting firm. So started out kind of along the same lines, working for smaller municipal consulting firms that worked for JCK, that's now defunct. Another thing that makes you kind of, kind of makes you, one thing that makes you realize you've been around for a while is that a lot of firms that you work for aren't in business anymore. It's not a good feeling. But nevertheless, JCK gave me a lot of insight into the city of Novi, working there on their stormwater master plans and a lot of their utility issues. Went from there to an even smaller consulting firm where I kind of took that municipal knowledge and then put it to work for private development, doing a lot of large warehouse design down by the airport, some residential development, and again, working through the permitting process of getting your approvals, appearing before planning commissions and city councils, getting site plan approval, working with the DEQ to get your appropriate permits, you name it, you know, pull all the permits from the road commission, whatever. We did all of that. And then after that, I did that for, probably I did that until, what's about 20 years ago, 1998, an opportunity came up with West Bloomfield Township as their engineering director and they were, I was fortunate enough to be selected from them. And that started my municipal career. Again, now I'm on the other side, so now I'm the regulator, trying to understand, trying to move projects along as quickly as possible and get what we need from the developers. Was there for about six years, had a lot of great experience, and then decided I need something more. I want operations experience. I needed to have the operations experience. So I left West Bloomfield Township. People thought I was absolutely out of my mind, and I went to take a job at the city of Lincoln Park, Michigan. Got a very good understanding of an inner ring, very blue collar, old residential, primarily residential community. It's about six and a half square miles, about 45,000 residents, lots of rooftop, a lot of very old infrastructure, and I'll be very candid with you, a political system and a city charter that was very dysfunctional. We followed, me and my administration, followed a large buyout that was provided for the older employees because they were in financial distress. And let's just say the organization, when we walked into it, wasn't really a real friendly environment to be in. Heavily unionized, a lot of animosity, very dysfunctional. And myself and my two new public super, public works superintendents went from an adversarial relationship with our DPW to one that was, I guess, as close as agreeable as possible under the circumstances. I mean, I can't even begin to tell you, it was the first, Bill Boland, my superintendent, called me up at two o'clock in the morning, I think it was January 7th, and he said, Gary, you need to come down here. We'd just gotten about six inches of snow. It was the first time I've ever seen snowplows. They had five large, L-9,000 Ford dump trucks from 1992. Keep in mind, this is 2006. Those trucks are well past your useful life, and they're torching on the underbodies to try to weld brackets onto the front snowplow assembly so they can push snow. It was just brutal. It was, it was not a good situation. So anyways, Southfield came along, bigger opportunity, engineering and public works again, different but same, same types of, same types of interpersonal issues. And then Farmington Hills came along, and I've been there for about, I've been there for just about eight years. Public services engineering there as well, again, great opportunities, a lot of infrastructure work, and just have had a lot of great opportunity and have moved into the assistant city manager's position. I have a wife and two kids at Michigan State. They're at the game today. And a lot of relatives in town, so I, you know, they were excited to see my name in the paper. Always, always works out that way, but, so that's who I am. And by the way, thank you again for the opportunity. I know that you guys have been here all day. I was, I was thankful that it was kind of crappy outside, a nice sunny day. I'm sure we all have yard work and things to do, but thanks for the opportunity. It means a lot to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Abraham will ask the next question.
Thank you for spending your Saturday with us. A little bit better than doing yard work.
Sure.
So what do you consider as essential in the relationship between a city manager and the city council? How would you facilitate a productive relationship?
Well, I think, and this may sound hokey, but I don't think it is, I think the biggest, the most important thing for a city manager is to have the ability to communicate effectively and openly with city council. There, there's no substitute for that. We, we share information. We don't hold information back and only share it to a specific few of those on council. If I get information, we share it to all folks on city council. The other thing that I think is important for your city manager is to be very, very transparent, especially in the procurement area. Purchasing is, let's just say it's been drilled into my head over the course of last 20 years, and typically where people get into trouble is where they try to break things up. I'm not, one thing I didn't find out was, was your purchasing one, this is a $10,000 without council approval? Try to break things up so there's like two $9,500 purchases to, you know, those types of things. But I think purchasing is, is key, and to make sure that those services, products, what have you, that the city needs are openly and competitively bid and brought to council for approval. And the last thing that I think is important for a city manager is to be, I guess I would, I wouldn't want to say referee, but I will say referee, try to work as best as we can in a fair manner. Typically, what I've seen, especially in Farmington Hills, is a very close relationship with the mayor. I would, I would likely suggest that have at least a weekly meeting with the mayor, and we would certainly put out a weekly memo of important information, even on non-council weeks. Probably definitely put a weekly memo together for council so that everybody knows what the significant, significant things were that happened that week. And probably one of the other things that I would do as well is, from, from your police chief or police department, probably provide you with a major incident report, just so everybody knows what's going on. Obviously, if there's something really major that happens, you're going to see it in the press, but have, have the police chief put together just a quick memo to let folks know what's going on and without, you know, impacting investigations or whatnot, but so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Baker will ask the next question.
Hi Gary, nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Thank you for coming. What would an internet search reveal about your past public positions? And is there any information or background that you'd like to provide?
Okay, so I have to, full disclosure, there may, there may be a somewhat of an embarrassing video my niece posted on her cruise from last, from last summer. I think what you would find is, you probably wouldn't find anything. I, I try to stay very reserved on any kind of political discussions on Facebook, any kind of social media. I don't know how to use Instagram, and I don't know how to use, what's the other ones? Snapchat? I tried, I can't figure it out, I guess, I don't know, it's just not intuitive to me. But if you did search, you would find a lot of family photos, you would probably see a lot of pictures of our dogs, you'd probably see a sailing, skiing, and from a professional perspective, you would see probably kudos and posts from other colleagues across the region and outsides, you know, and in the state and nationwide, mostly related to professional things, whether it be APWA or congratulating folks on projects that have won awards, those types of things.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton will ask the next question.
Thank you for coming today. Sure. What actions would you take to assure that the city is intentionally engaged in evaluating and improving its diversity and inclusion efforts to assure all residents have an opportunity to participate in local government?
Can I just ask a question of that? When you say participation in local government, are you talking about hiring practices? Are you talking about the ability to participate during public hearings?
I'm telling you both, like, how, how do you get a more diverse set of people that are involved with the government?
Okay.
Whether it's hiring, whether it's just being active in it, speaking out, having a communication with the city.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, from a hiring perspective, I think we'd certainly need to work with human resources to perhaps develop a strategy to attract and retain qualified candidates. We struggled at Farmington Hills and we've struggled in some other communities I've worked for attracting those applicants. A lot of times, they either don't have the skill set or they're just not interested in the public sector. We've gone to minority job fairs, we've gone to all of the universities, and we try to attract people to come into the public sector. A big, a big problem is, I think, in a lot of circles, folks just don't know that there are good careers to be had in the public sector. They either, you know, if they're engineering students, they're either going to work for a big three or one of the tier one, tier two, or tier three suppliers. If they're accountants, they're likely going to go somewhere and get a job as an auditor somewhere. Folks don't really think about coming to the public sector, and, and so sometimes it's hard to attract those folks. On the, on the externally facing, I think one of the things I would do, and again, maybe you have this and maybe you don't, I think I would talk to community leaders, whether they're, you know, in the, in the, your religious leaders, and may create some kind of an inter-agency or interfaith type situation where, you know, you have representatives from churches and from mosques and from temples meet once a month for lunch somewhere, and we talk about those issues and try to get folks more included in the community. Have a lot, they had a lot of experience with that as well, and so it opens up a dialogue. And, you know, I think I'd look to the police chief as well. I know in Farmington Hills, we've had a lot of community policing events with many of our religious leaders and religious groups, and I think PD has a lot of contacts that could open those doors for us.
Councilman Harrison will ask the next question.
Gary, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So Troy is a mature community with many difficult properties left to develop, mainly difficult properties to develop. What experience do you have in assessing development opportunities and challenges within a city, and what is your plan if selected as the next Troy city manager?
So that's not untypical. Sounds like maybe you have a lot of infill left. One of the things that you have to deal with, with remaining parcels is a lot of times there's a lot of environmental features, a lot of times there's utility issues, there's the infrastructure just isn't there. Again, I haven't had, done a full review of your ordinances to understand who extends utilities and whatnot. There's all kinds of variables. One of the, one of, one of the issues that came up for a difficult site, nobody, nobody in Farmington Hills, and I don't know if Troy Public Schools are going through this or not, is just the reduction in enrollment, okay? So we had a lot of neighborhood elementary schools in Farmington Hills close. I don't know if that's a problem here or not. The problem with that is when Farmington Hills was developing in the 50s, 60s, 70s, and 80s, more 60s and 70s, the neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods were master-planned to have the elementary school right in the middle of the, of the square mile, okay? And so we've had a couple of elementaries that have closed, the school district, of course, for many reasons, but they wanted to demo the building and, and bring development in, okay? So you can imagine when you have a development in the middle of a mature neighborhood and you're going to drop 25 new homes right in the middle of a new neighborhood, that presents a lot of challenges. You've got existing roads that are going to be beat up when they bring equipment in and out. You've got, you've got residents that have lived there and have enjoyed the schools for decades, and now it's going to be just another residential street. So how do you placate those issues? And so we work, we work pretty closely with the developer and the planning commission to address those issues. The environmental issues, you know, your ordinance are, your ordinances are in place, and there are states, state statutes that developers have to abide by and try to, try to shoehorn, try to shoehorn projects in. They can typically get through those, and they typically run the numbers to know what kind of square footage they need to make the developments work. The, getting back to the, to the other, the other situation where you've got development in a mature neighborhood, it's difficult. There's, there are bonds that need to be posted by the developer, you get phone calls from the residents. And in Farmington Hills, ours was really tense just because the neighborhood street had been repaved about 10 years ago and it was repaved through a special assessment. So the, so the residents have ownership of that road. They, you know, they don't, legally they don't have ownership, but financially, they've got buy-in in the road, and when you see a large excavator on a triple axel lowboy coming down the street, and it's, it's so big that when, when it tries to make the turn to get into the construction site, it happens to roll over a city council person's front yard, it gets a little difficult. And, you know, there's, there's patience that, that, that need to be had by both the residents and, and administration. And we should, you know, there's tickets that were issued too. So I think, long story short, to wrap that, wrap up that question, relying on your staff to know how to issue those permits, proper enforcement of those permits, working with the state agencies to make sure that those reviews go smoothly, and then, again, having an open dialogue with the developer. Usually your, your community developer or your city planner has a relationship with these developers to pick up the phone and say, what are you doing? You can't, you know, we, we gave you the site plan approval, now you're going into construction and you're really, you're really stirring the pot. So you need to be more cognizant of where you are and how you're doing the job. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hordrick will ask the next question.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. Good morning. Nice to meet you.
What do you see as the city manager's role in communicating with the press, you know, slash media and the public? And how do you plan to succeed in that?
This is how I would proceed. If there's an, if, if I get a call from a reporter, usually it'll come upstairs to city manager's office. If it's, if it's something that I don't feel comfortable discussing with a reporter, we're talking television here, right? Television interview, is that what you said?
Generally, you know, press, print media, radio.
I would typically, I want, I want the appropriate information, the correct information to hit the press. I'm not going to comment on something unless I understand, I understand the full depth of the issue. If it's a policing matter, it's going to police. If it's a, if it's a public works issue or an engineering issue, I probably would handle that. If it's, if it's something that I feel comfortable handling, I would do that. But typically, I like, I like to have my department heads, this may sound corny, have their day in the sun, if they're comfortable with that. I think it's a great learning experience for those department heads or the appropriate staff person. And if there's an opportunity for them to have a, to sit before a camera and do a television interview or, or just sit with a reporter, I think it's a great opportunity. And that's one thing we don't have enough of, I don't know if you're seeing it here, I think you are, is, we used, when I was, you know, 10 years ago, we used to have reporters at every city council meeting. We don't have that anymore. It's very difficult to get information out. The other externality of that is, it, now it generates a relationship between that department head and a reporter. And so there's a level of comfort there. Hopefully they can build that relationship, and maybe there's a trust, there's a trust level that's built as well.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington will ask the next question.
Gary, thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
Please describe in detail your approach to municipal budgeting, including the process you would use to develop budget objectives with city council and facilitate budget development with department heads.
So my strategy is always to look to my finance director first. While I, as your city manager, have ultimate oversight and recommendation authority to city council for budget approval, it starts with the finance director. I need to understand where we are right now with the budget, what may, what are his or her projections for the year-end budget? Are we going to come in over or under? And what is it, what does the revenue stream look like for next year? What is our increase, what may our increase be? What might it not be? And then probably settle on information and instructions to department heads that, well, gee, for the last 10 years, it's been, guys are doing a great job, hold your budgets flat, okay? And that's typically where we would start. If, if there's a need to perhaps bring staff on for a particular reason, those are usually issues, we talk about those. And then, once those budget instructions go out, department heads put their budgets together, they need to get them to the finance department by a specific date, you guys have all been through this, and then we start having individual meetings with the departments. And we would talk about a myriad of things, but try to understand, are they over in certain areas that, that they were last year? If so, why? There's a lot of reasons why one particular line item in a budget may go up one year substantially from the previous year. And so there's a lot of understanding of where your department heads are coming from and trusting that they're providing good information. And then typically, what I would do too, is after we have those individual departmental discussions, I would sit down, again, likely with the finance director in the room, and we would talk capital budgets. What kind of equipment do we need? Does PD need to work on the gun range? Are there other facility maintenance issues that need to come, that need to be addressed? Phone systems, I mean, you can think, it just goes on and on and on. And always the means, the needs outweigh the means, and go through a prioritization of what we can fund, are we going to take a fund balance draw or not, and try to come up with something that I feel comfortable with presenting to city council for your consideration. I will tell you that the capital piece, I've reviewed your budget, and I, the 1.4, 1.5 mils for capital. mils for capital, with, luckily, your neighborhood streets are in pretty good shape, your engineering folks at Bill's done a really good job of that. But I think you're going to be challenged with, because I know we are, with your facilities' maintenance needs and how you balance that with capital equipment needs of public works and fire department and your police department. Hopefully, there's a lot of drug forfeiture money? No? So it's a balancing act, and that's how we go through the process. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Gary, I'll ask the next question. I assume you've taken a look at the city's organizational structure?
Little bit.
How do you feel about the current structure? Do you feel there is a need to implement change? If so, express your ideas and tell us your philosophy on the city's organizational structure.
You know, candidly, I would tell you right now, I thought about this, and I have kind of jotted down some short-term and long-term goals. And a short-term goal, say, a year to 18 months, my first thing out of the gate is to establish relationships with you, with the employees, with folks from the public. I'm sure you have a lot of folks that come to council meetings and lots of people that are very involved with the city. Once I establish those relationships with staff, I think I would really need to understand and sit down with the department heads to understand where the organizational structure came from historically, why, and does it make sense anymore? I will candidly, I'll tell you that your community economic development department, that's a big department to be under one department head. I know you've outsourced the building department. I'm really used to having, well, let me rewind that a little bit. There's, Farmington Hills, back in the day, had a structure very similar to Troy's, where they had one person, it was my predecessor that sat on top of community development, building, planning, engineering, public works. And in the 90s, or 80s and 90s, when Bill Kostic came in, he broke that up. He wanted to have a separate public services department that had engineering in it, and then he had community development that had planning and coenforcement and building on that side. I don't know why he did it, but I can get a feel for that. This is a big town, and there's a lot of things going on. And, you know, maybe you need to have a little bit of separation there. Maybe not. I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't know. What I do know is that I probably need, I would need a year to 18 months to really understand that. And I think before anything would happen, it certainly would have discussions with the seven of you to get your ideas and bounce those ideas off of you. I don't typically work in a vacuum, it doesn't work real well. So I like to get a lot of feedback.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Proten, paper here.
Thank you, Mayor. If you are selected as the next city manager, how would you build trust and respect of the employees and also with the community?
Again, it comes back to relationships. I've had a lot of good mentors in my life, my professional career. And if you don't have a relationship with somebody, a lot of times, they're not real motivated to work with you or to help you along in life. And it takes time. It takes time to build those relationships. And I think over that period of time, the trust comes. It's earned, but it comes. And I know that this organization has gone through an awful lot in the last, you know, two, three years. I understand that there's a lot of sensitivity to that. I'd like to think I have a pretty high emotional quotient. I have an innate ability to take a pretty stressful situation and diffuse it. I like to have fun with staff. I'm not, if you're looking for somebody to come in and drop the hammer and say, "This is where we're going, follow me," that's not me. It takes me time to build momentum, and it takes time to, perhaps, impose is a very strong word, influence change. It just does.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. Professionally and personally, how do you plan to be involved in our community?
Professionally and personally? You've got great restaurants. Professionally, you know, I understand that there's a lot of things that are going on here. Art Tepujin's a friend of mine, so likely get involved and have good interactions with him in the Chamber of Commerce. Certainly open to homeless association meetings, any other types of extracurriculars that Troy has going on, outreach from your personal recreation special services group, so I'm not quite sure what you call them here, but all of those things. I mentioned, I have a lot of relatives that live in town. I suggest that your comment is slanted towards, would my wife and I move to Troy? If not, we would consider that. I love where I live, don't get that wrong, but we would consider that. Okay? And I think I just have to see how things work out here. If I am fortunate enough to be selected and I lose all my hair the first six weeks because of the drive back and forth, you'll likely probably see me put a "for sale" sign on the front yard. So, you know, that could very much happen. As far as win. And you're getting a lot of points from me, I'll tell you. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Councilman Henson?
Thank you. City of Troy is proud of its longstanding fiscal stability. And while recognizing that fiscal policy is set by city council, what assistance would you provide to maintain or improve our financial position? And what past experiences demonstrate your financial acumen?
Certainly, we would have very spirited budget debates. You know, we need to live within our means. I understand that there is a charter amendment that was passed by a vote of the people that really ties council's hands as it relates to levying your full millage without a vote of the people. That's a concern of mine. I think as, I think as this community matures even more than it is, and it's not the only community that's facing this, in order to perhaps drive revenue up, there's not a whole lot of choices. You either need to increase your population and your tax base, or you need to consider asking the residents to float millages. And I've done that twice now at Farmington Hills. I'm not, I am not a person that's going to come in and tell you right away, "We need to pass a millage." I think we would, under my administration, we would do everything we could to stave that off. But I'm not going to let this council or future councils get themselves into trouble with, you know, drawing for fund balance, drawing below where you should be, borrowing money from your water and sewer department, putting a big fat IOU in there. We won't go that route. I just want everybody to, you know, my goal would be to communicate that effectively to council, let you all know what your financial standing is, what the future holds for us, and we need to collectively make a decision, how do we move forward? And if it's going out and asking the residents for more money, so be it. If it's not, and you tell me, "Gary, you got to knuckle down and can't buy a new ladder truck this year, you can't buy a new loader," that's what we do. And I would vet those, again, I think your biggest issue is going to be capital. Your day-to-day operations, I don't know what typical increases you've given over the past several years, I'm assuming it's probably 2% to staff. I understand the defined benefit, pensions closed, we're in a defined contribution now. I don't know what's going on with your retiree health care, if that's still available, or if that's like a retiree health savings plan. You know, your pension fund looks great. You're at about 109% funded, fabulous. Your retiree health care, that gave me a little bit of heartburn, that's a 60%. We're at about 89% in Farmington Hills, but you've got some money there in the pension plan that maybe you can move it around and supplant that. So, you know, taking a look at the big picture would bring those recommendations to council, we'd have those discussions.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Based on your research and understanding of the city of Troy, what do you believe are the most important opportunities and challenges for the city in the near term?
Let me go to my opportunities and challenges here. Okay, so, try to have some fun here, guys. You know, okay, I'll throw it out there, this civic center project. I think that's an opportunity, I think it's a challenge. I don't know what council's pleasure is on that. Certainly, what I saw, when I came to your community center and I saw that rolled out about 18 months ago to the, I think Oakland County Planning Association put that on, Dave and I, my boss, were there, our economic development person was there, and my jaw hit the table. I thought, "This is really incredible, this is a cool idea." And then I started reading, you know, newspaper articles came out, and I thought, "Whoa, okay, there's a lot of pushback here." We thought, we thought that, you know, you guys are bringing the community along here, maybe were, there's obviously some folks that don't like that, so that's a challenge. And it could be a benefit. Okay? Maybe, depending on how council wants to do, I don't know if it's dead, maybe you come back, maybe you change it, you modify it, maybe you don't have to move the aquatic center, maybe you can work around it. You do have a lot of space here, it's a nice campus, it really is beautiful. Your Kmart property, from an economic development perspective, again, I don't have the inside line on that, I know that's been a thorn in this city's side for many years, maybe with, and I don't even know who the holding company is, but that's an awful big piece of property on a major thoroughfare that needs to be redeveloped in some form or fashion. Maybe your folks and your staff have had conversations with the developer, not sure. We talked about OPEB, okay? I think your OPEB, you look good there. We've talked about capital funding, I think that's going to be a challenge. I think whoever you hire, restoring employee confidence is going to be a challenge. And if you pick me, maybe it won't be as much of a challenge, but I'm just, you know, those are some of the things I've identified. And, you know, to a certain extent, maybe the relationship with the city manager and the public, that's clearly a challenge. The reputation, this, again, I don't want to get on, I don't want to pontificate or get on my soapbox, but your city manager needs to be almost beyond reproach. And it's a difficult, it's a difficult, it's a difficult line to hold. Takes a lot of patience, and it takes a lot of thought. You're not, you won't see me have a knee-jerk reaction. You may even be disappointed that I don't have a knee-jerk reaction to things that may come up. I think about things and make logical decisions, I guess that's the engineer in me. And I don't know enough about your, I don't know enough about the maturity of your workforce. So certainly, you know, attracting and retaining good employees, especially in this world of defined contribution and pensions and, you know, reduced benefits, used to be our pay was less, but we had better benefits. Now we have reduced pay and same benefits as private sector, so how do you compete with the private sector to retain your employees, especially those that, and this is no disservice to folks that work the front counter, like your professionally trained folks, your engineers, your accountants, people in your finance department maybe, how do you attract and retain those folks? And then, again, getting back to the maturity of the workforce, succession planning. I know you just hired a new police chief, and that was a decision that clearly had to be made. So I think those are some of the challenges that I just jotted down real quickly.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderick?
What steps would you implement to assure an ethical culture in the city?
Good question. You know, again, haven't done a deep dive on this, but certainly, I would think that City of Troy has an employee manual that has a code of ethics in it. And when folks are hired on, Human Resources goes through that, lets the new employee understand what the expectations are of the city. You know, and certainly, there's a level of trust that you have to have, again, with the employee. If a vendor comes in, engineering consultant, planning consultant, wants to grab lunch to talk about something, I don't necessarily see that as an ethics issue, excuse me. But certainly, somehow awarding contracts without council's approval that don't meet the purchasing criteria, those are huge issues and can get you sideways in a lot of instances. You know, and ethics, ethics aren't, ethics aren't something that you can necessarily instill in somebody either. I'd like to think that all of our parents raised us appropriately, and we all learned the golden rules by the time we were in kindergarten, how to treat people, how you'd like to be treated, and all those types of things. But I think, and maybe you do, having the employee handbook, employee code of conduct, perhaps you need to have an ethics statement that they sign when they're hired on, that's an idea, maybe you have it right now, I don't know. And then, if I see something, or a department head sees something, or if I see one of my department heads do something, you're going to have a conversation with them and explain to them, you know, "What you just did doesn't look real well, doesn't look real good." I had a colleague of mine tell me one time, "Don't do anything, don't do anything that you wouldn't be proud of seeing above the fold on the front page of the newspaper." Right? Maybe you guys have heard that. That's how I live my life. I don't want to be embarrassed, I got, you know, I got a reputation to uphold, and, you know, this community does too.
Okay? Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Gary, please describe a situation you've handled where the community faced a contentious issue with strong diverging opinions, and what did you learn from this experience?
Well, we're living it right now in Farmington Hills. And it has to do with our local road issue. So just to give you a little bit of background, Farmington Hills, in their charter, it specifically says that local streets will be reconstructed through a special assessment process, and the city will only pay up to 20% of the cost of that project. The residents have to pay at least 80% of the cost of that project. And that was put in the charter in the early 70s when Farmington Hills became a city. And there's various aspects on why that may have gone in to the charter. The biggest one was probably because Farmington Hills had a lot of gravel roads at the time. And now that we're going to become a city, if you want to become a city, I'll, you know, I'll vote for the charter, I'll vote for the ballot proposal, but road paving was clearly an issue. I don't want to have to pay to have some guy on a gravel road have his road paved. So we got what we got, okay? The unfortunate thing is, that's a very reactive way. The unfortunate thing is, that's a very reactive way of handling local road conditions. And everybody knows that roads and pavement in general across the state of Michigan is a hot topic, and it's a very hot topic in Farmington Hills. We've got about 58% of our local streets that are in poor condition on the Pacer scale. And back in 2014, 2015, we had one subdivision in particular come before city council, they brought in, they dropped off their, it's a long story, dropped off their petitions to the clerk's office, they had 51% of the people in favor of the project to reconstruct the roads. And between the time the clerk got the petitions, to when we could schedule the date for the first public hearing, there were people that walked around that neighborhood and twisted people's arms to where it flipped, 49-51 against. And the roads needed to be reconstructed. It was the third time in 10 years that that neighborhood had come in with petitions. We had really bad conditions in the winter because it was uneven pavement, it was freezing in the wintertime, it was dangerous, people couldn't walk, we had a couple of vehicular accidents out there. And, long story short, council said, okay, fine, if you guys don't want your road repaved, we're done. The next study session, council came to me, I was still Public Services Director at the time, and they said, Gary, we need you to take that pavement management study and build a policy on local road reconstruction. And that's exactly what we did. And what we came up with, and we worked with council, is we said, you know, based on the pavement management study, if your average pavement condition in a neighborhood on 1 to 10 is a 2.75 or less, your neighborhood's going on a capital improvement program, and if you don't submit a petition to us with folks in favor of a local street special assessment, council's going to execute their authority under the charter, and we're going to force special assessments. This is where the diverging interests come in. And that's exactly what they did. In 2015, in the fall of 2015, they identified the top three projects, top three neighborhoods, about 10 miles of road that were going to be reconstructed the following year, and they started the special assessment process. Those public hearings were very interesting. I've been through a lot of special assessment public hearings, I think I, my skin got about three inches thicker through that process. It was not fun. But, you know, to their credit, city council stuck to their guns. They needed to get the roads reconstructed. And we had public hearings that went on for two and a half, three hours. And it wasn't just one neighborhood, we had three neighborhoods. And so we had six public hearings in the period of six weeks to take care of this issue. Needless to say, that wasn't something that council wanted to go through again, so it really made them come together and work towards perhaps considering changing the charter. And in order to change the charter, they had to supplant this funding from the special assessments with a road millage. And so that's really what the folks have in front of them today, is on November 6th, do you want to change the city charter, number one, to a local road millage? And number two, if you like that, then we need another 2.75 mills, we need another 9.2 million a year to effectuate that change. Leave it to the voters. It'll be interesting to see what happens if the ballot proposal fails.
Thank you, Gary. I have the last question, okay, for you. You touched on this a little bit, but our past city manager contracts have included a provision requiring the city manager to live within 20 miles of the city. If offered the position, would this type of provision be acceptable to you?
I wouldn't consider moving into the city, or within that. I don't know if that's as the crow flies or not, but I would have to consider that. Sure, Dave.
Thank you. Yep. Gary, we'll give you an opportunity to ask questions or make a closing statement if you'd like today.
Sure. I've just got a couple of quick questions, I know we're supposed to be done here by four. You know, and I don't know who wants to answer this, what are you looking for in a city manager? Are you looking for somebody that's a visionary? Are you looking for somebody to put the organization back together again? I really don't know how bad it is from the employee morale perspective. And I'm just kind of curious, what are you folks looking for?
Well, I think it's probably a good question that everybody would ask us. We can quickly go around the table and get some input, but I'll start this time again. You know, I think from my perspective, you know, we're looking for somebody to come in and lead the organization, be a good leader, and meet with staff, meet with the city council, and, you know, everybody seems to have a different perspective as to how bad things are or how good things are. So sometimes it's best if you get that from yourself rather than hear it from me or other council members or whatever. But I think, you know, myself, I'm looking for, we need a good leader right now. And I think we all know what a good leader is, so.
What I'm looking for is someone who can bring stability and integrity to the position. I think we've been stuck a little bit in the past year or so, there's been a lot of mistrust with the community. We had a charter amendment that came up last year as a direct result of, I'll say, some opposition to the Civic Center project, and we haven't been able to maybe move forward and progress together as a city as much as we'd like. So I'm looking for someone that can rise to the challenge of leading us to stability, integrity, so we can kind of pick up where we left off about a year or so ago, and really engage the community to keep growing the city.
I think it would be really funny if you got seven different complete answers. So far, I'm good with both of what's been said, so I want to roll. I sent someone else a question earlier, and I talked a little bit about this, but I'm looking for somebody that can come in on day one and be prepared to do the job as a great leader, and somebody who can pick up some of the things that have been dropped over this past year as we struggled with some of the things. I said earlier, we have great department heads, great city staff, that have done a great job keeping things going. And obviously, it's important for me that our next city manager is somebody that recognizes those talents, and a smart city manager would utilize them.
Absolutely.
But to keep it short, that's kind of where I'm at.
Same.
Okay. That's what I expected.
There is healing that needs to go on, that will come through the trust, the rebuilding of trust. And so we're looking for somebody that comes in with that clear integrity and that openness, the willingness and capability to engage with our residents. And, you know, we have an amazing city staff, they do amazing work, and continuing to propel that forward is important. Troy is, you know, as you mentioned and as you said, is such a stellar place. Kind of picking up and helping us heal that up and then move forward is, we'll need the solid leadership to do that, so.
I have nothing to add than what Camara Portman ran, exactly the same, ethics, transparency, healing.
And a visionary, somebody that can work with staff. You know, we've got a couple projects that were stalled that don't need to be cleaned up and moved forward or ditched, and somebody that would bring new ideas to the table.
Stability, transparency, all the above. I like, I mentioned thinking out of the box, and Councilman Baker corrected me and saying sometimes we need boxes, right? But I like somebody who's innovative enough to see into the future a little bit and create new ideas, bring new ideas to us, and yes, think outside the box sometimes to try to present that to the city, and absolutely pick up the pieces of some things that were kind of left, not in the shambles, but certainly unattended to in the last year and a half or so.
Do you guys have like an annual goal-setting session?
Typically, we've had a retreat, the council and staff, a yearly retreat, and we talk about strategies for the next budget session, and kind of goals and objectives.
You know, from my perspective, that session is very important. You know, some of those, it's kind of a cloud-walking exercise, right? To a certain respect, so I can fill those expectations, I believe. I don't want to sound, I don't want to inject too much hubris into this, but I can be that. From a visionary perspective, it's fun to be a visionary, it's fun to think about how, you know, it's such a great town, how to make it even better, right? But I think the real, the special sauce is how do we work as a group to identify that vision and to try to get there? I'm not the person, I'm not the kind of person that would get too far out in front of city council on something like that, okay? We've got to bring the group along, and you've got to bring the citizens along, because they're going to ask one question, what's in it for me, right? Are you going to, you know, if you do this city center project, what's in it for me? Because all I'm seeing right now maybe is a bunch of traffic, is it going to reduce my property taxes because now you've got increased revenue? Is my quality of life going to improve? So those are some of the things that you need to ask those questions. I've got my best sounding board, in a lot of respects, are my kids, my wife, and my parents, because they're, they don't work in our world. This is a bit of an echo chamber. And especially my parents, because my dad's 87 years old, he's not voting for any road millage. He's not voting for anything. He told me, he goes, I'm not going to be here to enjoy this, and I voted for it. And then I worked on him. And then, and he said, okay, I guess for the good of the whole, that makes sense. And he saw the value in how it may impact his property value, so he kind of put it in those perspectives. The, what was the other question I had for you guys? I had another question for you, I'm losing my place here. Well, if I think about it, I'll send you an email date. I don't have any other, oh, I know what it was. What do you guys think the biggest challenges for the city? Other than putting the healing together, is it economic development? What is it? You got the city center project, do you think that's, do you think that's something that you would want to move forward on? You don't have to disclose that right now, I know you had to discuss that. But, you know, like I said before candidly, it's an interesting project. And when Dave and I saw that, we took some interesting things back with us, and we've got a couple large pieces of property that we could, when you take, when you take the downtown Birmingham footprint and you drop it on a piece of property, it really makes you start thinking from an economic development perspective. But I know along with that comes a big price tag for infrastructure improvements as well. So, those are the only questions I had for council.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't want to get too far past our allotted time, but I think we all have different perspectives as to what we need to see. You know, we're all different, and we all have our own ideas, and some of us are concerned about civic center sites, some of us are concerned about, you know, unfunded projects and revenue sharing, and, you know, give us our money that's due us from financing, and, you know, we could go on and on and on. We all have, we all have our own maybe wish list.
Sure.
But we certainly appreciate you coming in today, and look forward to the future, that's for sure.
Can I say one more?
Absolutely.
So I did have someone who opposed your statement prepared, but...
Go ahead.
So, first of all, I want to thank all of you. I know this has been a long day for all of you, to give up your Saturday like this, I know it's important for all of you, to be a fine, appropriate leader. Hopefully today, based on, you know, my educational background, my professional experience, and you know, you kind of saw the real deal here, that you think I'm a good candidate for the position. And one of the things that, one of the reasons why I got into the public sector to begin with, was the ability to serve people and to serve a community. And that's what I enjoy, I enjoy doing that very much. I don't think people would get into this business if they didn't enjoy serving their residents and their community. So with that, I want to thank you once again, and hope that you consider me very strongly for the opportunity, and look forward to maybe coming back later on in the month and doing it all over again, so, thank you, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you. Before we take a break, let's just take a minute and allow, let's take a five-minute break to transition into the next phase here, so we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.